Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody. It is four thirty-one in the afternoon. This is Robert Stevenson, the Chair of the School Committee. We are, I'm looking to get a motion to enter into our special meeting for interview of the Director of Finance and Operations Open Position.
So.
Okay.
Can I get a show of hands entered into this meeting? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. With us this evening, we have Nicholas Bernier. Nicholas or Nick, how are you?
Thanks.
Nick, Nick, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to introduce yourselves. And then what we'll do, or actually what I'll do real quick, we're gonna go around and introduce ourselves. And then we'll let you introduce yourself, and then we've got eight, nine questions for you. And we'll try to handle this in a pretty organized manner, but Ted, why don't I start with you? Just introduce yourself.
Follows my ask.
Where it's from.
Hello, I'm Erica, spelled with a K. I live here in Southwick. Obviously, I have two children that are no longer in the district, but I'm gonna stay on the school board, so. Yes.
My name's Ryan. I'm also from Southwick. My four children are in district. I have one at high school, two in middle, one in.
Nick, I already answered most parts. Let's see.
I'm. Nick knows. You know, they're twenty along, so Nick, I'm Peter Petchke. I live in Granville. I'm the Vice Chair of the School Committee. I still teach at Agloam Junior High. My children are now juniors and they are in this district, yes.
And I'm Robinson, we met for your initial interview. Nick, I'm gonna give you an opportunity, introduce yourself, give us a little background on your, on what brought you to today. And then, like I said, we've got some questions that we would like to ask you to hopefully determine whether we would like to offer the opportunity for you to come on board.
All right. Well, I'm Nick Bernier. Currently, I'm the Director of Business Relations for East Hampton Public Schools. Over the course of my, in my twenty-second year of education now, I've held several roles. I taught seventh grade social studies for most of my, my time, including for ten years with Committee Member Petchke. And then I was an elementary school principal for five years after that, also in Agloam. And then in twenty twenty-one, your reopening that we all finally remember. I stumbled upon an opportunity to become a school business official in Northampton. The superintendent there had prior, he'd worked in Agloam before, he was the Director of Special Education and finally remembered his time there. I saw the position open up. I said, why not take a chance? I, you know, thought somewhere down the line, I would, you know, wanna do this work, but maybe I didn't expect to do it laterally in my career, but, you know, sometimes you can't pick when our opportunities are there, so. I ended up spending a year there in Northampton and Dr. Tobos and I left at the same time. I went to East Hampton, you know, leaving the very end. And I've been in East Hampton ever since, in the same role, although I do different things in East Hampton. I did in Northampton, you know, I have to guess the difference in terms of your, you know, actual responsibilities maybe, certainly. In any events, I, you know, noticed that this position was posted twice, I believe. I thought I saw it like out initially and then it was reposted.
Well, we had it posted.
We argued about it.
Probably. Yeah, well, no, we had it open two years ago, then we had it filled, and then we had it, we had to, we ended up appointing an interim and then turned it into a permanent position. But then it opened up again this summer.
Yeah, okay. And then, yeah, I saw it come back on school spring sometime in September.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, I saw it and, you know, I thought, you know, I live right over the border in Southern Westfield. I spend quite a bit of time here in Southwick, you know, frequenting businesses or riding my bicycle on bike trail and whatnot, so I, you know, I wanted to take a chance and, you know, see, see if the position was balanced and, you know, see if I'd be a good fit here in the history that's, you know, likely shared a lot of my values from me being so local. So that's a little bit about me.
Sounds good. All right, so I've got the first question. It's what are your immediate goals and objectives that you anticipate achieving in your first three months in the district? And what activities are you considering for your entry plans?
Well, I think that, I mean, the first step you gotta take in any new position is getting to know your stakeholders. In a position, especially one that works in the superintendent's office, there's going to be a lot of different stakeholders of whom you'll work. And it's, you know, sometimes those stakeholders have competing interests and you end up in the middle. You know, which is one of those things they don't tell you in your, you know, your, you know, picture. But, you know, and even when you see it from this kind of thirty thousand foot view. You know, you have to learn the folks that you're gonna be working with and, and develop relationships with them. I mean, you know, even though the work that I do now is not in a classroom anymore, relationship, they're still the cornerstone of it. So I mean, without, you know, having strong relationships with your colleagues, with elected officials, with, you know, town officials and, and staff in schools and everything, you, you know, you're not gonna be that successful. So I think that number one priority would be to, you know, begin to form relationships with everyone I'd be working with. Number two, I would have an awful lot to learn about regional school districts, considering I've only been a school business official in the municipality. Obviously, there's overlap there, there should be some nuance as well that comes with being a regional school district. So, you know, getting ahead of that learning curve as much, you know, as I can would be a close second in terms of priorities. You know, I think three would be just getting to know the way that Southwick, Tullan, Granville Regional School District works. I mean, you know, every, even if I were to go to another municipal district, everywhere's got their, their nuance. Processes are done differently. You know, what may work in one place may not work in another. You just, you, you know, you just have to learn the way things function in your, you know, environment. So that, you know, that would certainly be a priority as well out of the gate. Thinking about three months down the line, that gets you, you know, to the next calendar year. You know, you're gonna be in the middle of budget season, so that would be, that would be number one at that point. You know, learning your budget process. You know, creating what I need to in order to build the budget for fiscal year twenty-six. I've, you know, got tons of spreadsheets and whatnot that I use to make my budget where I am, but it may not look exactly like what, you know, is expected here. You know, I have my budget book. You probably have your own that, you know, is what you would expect it to be year in and year out. So I have to, like, you know, tailor all of my backup so I could come to that, you know, instead of what I currently have. You know, and then the other piece is just kinda figuring out where everybody is. I mean, I keep a detailed personnel spreadsheet where I am of, you know, everybody in each building, the counter paid out of, what staff they're on, what role they're in, what their salary, you know, that kind of thing. Like, you have to know where all your people are because you can get into some trouble. You know, the man under budget, if, you know, somebody's not in the right place or not on the list or whatever, and, you know. Kind of when I went to East Hampton, that was something that I did almost immediately was take what was left for me and turn it into what made sense to me, so I could keep track of everybody and, which really helps with position control. Which is crucial. I mean, some new positions are going to be added throughout the course of a year, perhaps a, you know, a student on IEP needs a one-to-one. Also, I mean, you don't have a staff member using reality. Sometimes a position gets created, but, you know, prior to that, you need a funding source. And, you know, you have to make sure that, you know, you're not over budget before you do that and keeping, you know, records like that is, you know, that's how I do that. So, you know, within three months, I'd like to have that built. Unfortunately, coming into a position not on July one, you're, you know, you're in the middle of an operating school year, so a lot of these things happen concurrently rather than consecutively, but I would say that those would be the priorities and goals within the first few months.
Super. Okay, you've got the second question.
Tell us about a serious financial crisis that you've been involved in during your professional career. What was it? How were you involved? And how was the crisis resolved?
All right, well, between the time in which I interviewed in East Hampton and I actually started, the budget that the school committee had passed in March of twenty twenty-two, not all of it ended up being in the city's final budget. So what was passed by the city council was about five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars less than what, you know, the school committee had passed. And, you know, I didn't even know that until right before I, I started. I, you know, I was trying to tie up all my loose ends in Northampton and everything. I really wasn't paying attention and I don't even know it was in the paper, to be honest with you. So, you know, a couple of weeks before I started, I met with the outgoing business administrator there who was something tied on. So I was able to have a few good conversations with her and, you know, she let me know, like, we're starting off with this kind of large deficit here. So I was like, whoa, when are we gonna do that? So basically, what I did is I, you know, I went in to, you know, I mean, you kind of have to go off of what the school committee had, had thought they needed. So nothing was cut, per se. We did cut some money off of two accounts and the school committee had to revote the budget because otherwise, you know, you're gonna run into legal issues there. Think if the, you know, those two budgets don't mirror one another. But there is some work with the school committee, finance subcommittee, and as well as city officials. We kind of came to an understanding that the school department would be allowed to go and seek an additional appropriation toward the end of the year if necessary. I thought, sure, that's going to be necessary, five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars since the pot. But we also, you know, certainly didn't want to come out of the gate and say, well, we need this exact five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, because at the time, we had a brand-new school open as well. It was pre-k, eight-building, new construction, and it just opened that, that year. And a lot of the increase in the budget was transportation, because we had three very small labor-out entries, which most of them was lost. All of a sudden, we now have nine buses, which more than doubled the cost of transportation, so. You know, that piece was obviously fixed, you know, about a bus ton, perhaps, but, you know, there were other things that we thought, maybe we could make some efficiencies here and we don't. So I was invited to be on the city finance team, which meant we, it was myself and Mayor, the Treasury, God, and the HR Director. And, you know, through that, I think we did a lot of work and there's some good relationship forming there and in trust building, which was essential. And in February, the forecast about where we're gonna end up at the end of the year, which, you know, in February, that's still kind of thrown darts, I have a dartboard of maybe one eye closed. March, I did the same thing, and it came out about ten thousand dollars difference. So it was, it was close. So at that point, I kind of trusted my number. Free cash had been certified, which, you know, in the municipal world, you gotta wait till that occurs until you can ask for an appropriation, but I dialed in on my number. The city council granted it. And, you know, we ended up actually returning a little bit of it to the city at the end of the year. So, you know, through, I would say, you know, conservative spending during the course of the year. You know, just a couple of vacant positions here and there, you know, sometimes can find some savings there. You know, we were able to get by, we were able to get what we needed, and we were able to avoid a real crisis. We didn't have to lay anybody off. And all the bills were paid, so that, you know, it's a tough situation to walk into, but, you know, I was happy the way it ended up and, you know, the budget the following year and budget this year, those processes are smoother.
Super.
So that was good.
Great. Ted, you've got the next one.
What are some of the unique challenges that you foresee and look forward to when handling all of the financial operations of a small rural regional school district?
Ah, well, I think that, I mean, the biggest challenge, as I noted earlier, is just learning the world of regional school finance. Your revenue sources come from several different places, or, you know, mine doesn't come from that many, you know. Our appropriation, I've got school choice money, I've got, you know, pure revolving fund, I've got surgery breaker. I'm kind of limited. You have early, you have E and D, you have some of the other things that I just mentioned that I have. You've got transportation reimbursement, you've got different, you know, avenues of revenues. I mean, I think that, you know, a big challenge there is just learning what needs to come from what to cover everything. I mean, I, you know, in my world, I'm used to, you know, school community budget's gonna cover, you know, most of this. There'll be grants, there'll be other, revolving funds, as I said, but, but your sources are a lot different. And, you know, a lot more plentiful. And, you know, I think the process looks different in this kind of setup, if, you know, additional money was needed, you know. I believe that was with our town meeting, which is something that I've heard. Never done. So, you know, the, the, like, challenges, kind of learning that process. You know, with, I think, biggie backing the nuggets, with a small district, you're, you know, you're always going to be looking at limited resources. You're gonna be looking for efficiencies. Your enrollment has decreased in the last couple of years, as have most. You know, with that, sometimes comes, you know, plus chapter seventy, plumbing must be your whole harmless district, which I believe you are. So, you know, just trying to balance what you have with the needs are, are, you know, that, that's a challenge too. And that's not unique to this particular place. I mean, the, just the needs of the students are more than there used to be. I mean, enrollment may be less, but, you know, to take a look statewide at, you know, your high needs populations on the, you know, the DESI website, you're gonna see those numbers have increased since twenty twenty, for sure. So you're balancing limited resources, limited students with higher needs. I think that's definitely.
Sure. Erica with a K.
Yes. Describe your experience with strategic planning and capital planning, including facilities and technology. How do you incorporate financial information, budgets and projections into an academic strategic plan?
All right, so my experience with, you know, strategic and capital planning, and basically capital planning where I am now is we, we have a running capital list and the city kind of handles how that's going to be, you know, distributed, more or less. We haven't had a lot of capital, you know, I guess, needs or requests in the last couple of years, so it's like, you know, society building. And our high school is only eleven years old too, so there's, you know, we're not in a situation where we have fifty-year-old buildings with your spoilers breaking, things like that. And from what I'm told, there, you know, there hasn't been a lot of capital, you know, funding for those schools, right, right currently in the last few years, but each year we did the budget, I, I did submit a capital plan to the city, so, so it's there. So the needs are, are there for sure. So you develop that. I mean, you talk to the people around you, you talk to your principals, obviously work with your superintendent, you talk to your facilities, you know, people, and see kind of what's gonna be on the horizon here in the next few years, because you've got to get it out there in order to start budgeting. Sorry, you can't, you know. Obviously, things come up. I mean, you, you got a big roof leak or something, you, you know, perhaps, and you anticipate those, those are extraordinary maintenance measures, but, you know, maybe you need a new roof. But you can see that a couple of years down the road, which I was able to do this year, where I'm actually getting boarding lighten in about a month. Because our facilities directors is, it's gone. It's like a two thousand and eight, and they didn't even pass inspection, so it was, but it was on the capital list for five years. So, you know, the, the need was, was known. So I, I think really what you gotta do is meet with, you know, with people around you who know more than you do about what they eat in their buildings, that what's, you know, breaks and, and and everything like that. And, you know, whatever's not on paper, now you, you get it there. I'm sure a lot of it already is. You know, and that, that's how you budget for it. You can't do everything in one year. You gotta, you gotta prioritize. You've got, you know, if you've got five things, you meet with your, your leadership team or, you know, whatever version of that you have here, and you say, okay, well, can't have five things in one year, might not even have three things in one year. But, you know, what's the number one priority here? And, you know, a lot of times I'll jump out and be a little bit arguing about it, because everybody's gonna advocate for their own, their own building, but, you, you know, eventually you can come up with a, you know, a prioritized list, and then you budget for it that way. You know, related to that, you said, you mentioned strategic planning, and I mean, your budget, you know, I mean, I guess your strategic plan as a district is really a driver of the way your budget gets the follow-ups. You know, your budget's as much of it is a document with a lot of numbers in it, and obviously it's an important one to save your costs and what your plans are, but you, you know, it's really also kind of a statement of your priorities or your values. So, you know, if you look at any district strategic plan, there's core values in there and you know, how, you know, what are our action steps to meet the goals in our strategic plan and, you know, what resources are needed? And that, I think, definitely ties into the budget. And I feel like that process occurs during the budget, like the internal budget development process of the leadership. I don't think it's.
Very well.
Super. Yes. Box.
Yeah. Can you give an example of how you have dealt effectively with multiple, sometimes competing constituencies? For example, town officials, administrators, teachers, central office personnel.
I think that during our last budget process. We knew it was going to be a big ask because of the, the S R cliff that everybody has experienced and, you know, every district uses their S R money differently. East Hampton used a lot of, a lot of positions, you know, a lot of S R money into positions, which, you know, I knew that going, you know, it was one of my questions actually during the interview there. You know, we were able, after my first year, to absorb some of those into the general fund budget, which was good. So we kind of anticipated more of a fiscal hill, rather than what you have to do, if you will. But as we got, you know, and I think originally when the positions were, were created, I think the, the goal was, or maybe the thought was to sunset some of them when the funding dried up. Because when the money came down the pipeline, people thought, well, you know, a few years down the road in twenty twenty-four, when that money has to be, you know, obligated, things will be better. Kids will be in a better, you know, position than they are. Things will be, we're not gonna be buying masks, you know. Except money came out not too long after the, you know, the pandemic hit grand scheme of things. And as, you know, we were looking at, you know, the, the state of the district and the state of, you know, just for kids where it's evident that you need to keep some positions here, because they're, they're just, they just aren't ready. And they're a lot different from where a few years ago. And, you know, especially in like the counseling realm. You know, and just, it needs support. So I mean, our ask was gonna be big. And, you know, we, we had several meetings with our leadership team, and of course, all the buildings are advocating to keep everything that they have, because whatever you not, I was a principal before, and we remember doing. You know. But, you know, you also had some, you know, some parents and caregivers in the community that, you know, were, were vocal during the process, that would come to the subcommittee meetings and, you know, advocate and say, you know, we, we, we don't have things like a foreign language program, or a rural language program, excuse me, at our, you know, middle school level, you know. Several other districts have that. They do, you know, have a plan for that. And, you know, obviously, we can't respond to a public speak time meeting. But, you know, it was certainly, you know, things for us to keep in mind, you know, because, you know, we look at things internally, we're trying to keep everything at. Then you're supporting students as, you know, the pandemic money dries up. We've got community, community members that, you know, see ways that things could be, you know, improved, you know, within schools. You know, at the time, we were negotiating with our collective bargaining units as well, so you had personnel cost increases. And, you know, you're trying to juggle all that together. I mean, you've got one group who's advocating for the largest raises that we can have. You have another group wanting to keep all the positions. You have a third group wanting to add stuff. And, you know, there was only so big of a budget we were gonna get, so it, it really took a lot of prioritizing and, you know, just being able to explain while I presented the budget to the school committee at the public hearing. And East Hampton, that, that's a me job. I do that on my own, so. I just, we had to have a rationale for everything. I think, you know, that's the key. You've got to explain your rationale. Why are we making these decisions? What is the impact that this is supposed to have on students? Why can't we have everything we asked for? And, you know, with, you know, obviously respecting the taxpayers and the city, who, you know, are funding education. So, you know, I, I think if you can have good conversations with stakeholders, I think if you can prioritize with your leadership team, I think if you can have rationale and, you know, said connecting it to your district strategic plans, I said in the, you know, the other, the earlier question. You know, the, one of the first slides of my budget presentation was that, that was a screenshot of the DESI website, the amount of high-need students that, you know. It had the enrollment in the left column, and then it had all the different subgroups. You had special ed, you had English learners, you had, you know, low-income students, and, you know, the enrollment was down about a hundred and five kids, and then the percentages of all the other subgroups were up. I mean, you know, we got the twenty-eight point four, point four percent special ed, which is, that's like eleven percent higher than state average. So that was the explanation. It was like, this is what we have and what we need to, you know, we need to keep there is, and to support this and get students where they need to be. So that's how I've juggled it back.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick follow-up.
Sure, sure.
Three communities. Three, three different quarters of selectmen. Three different finance committees. Reaching out to you. How do you feel about that?
You know, I'm, I'm not used to three different communities. I'm, I'm used to different elected, you know, bodies. I'm used to the school committee reaching out. I'm used to the city council reaching out. In fact, I've had the city council president prior to us presenting anything. Just to, you know, get ahead of it and give, you know, kind of the, here's where we are, what do you think? So I'm used to that. And, you know, sometimes a lot of the bodies are gonna be interested to be able to do that. Different communities, I mean, they're certainly going to, because each one, you know, has an amount that they're, you know, possess to pay for the budget and, you know, they may, you know, stand to reason that all of them think there is, that's what is due. You know. So, I mean, I think first, you kind of got to learn the way to land. And, you know, who you're working with, which, like, you know, this would be priority one as I started, which I mentioned earlier. You gotta learn all the, all the stakeholders and, you know, where they're coming from. And, you know, people reach out, you, you listen, you answer their questions, you explain to them, you know, just as you would anybody, what, you know, your rationale for various budgetary decisions are. Data helps if you've got, you know, student data. You know, if it's relevant to them, whatever they're asking, that helps. And otherwise, I, I, I think, I think it just depends on, on what they're asking. They, they just want information. He's giving the information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ryan.
Explain what you see as the relationship that should be developed with the school committee and how it differs to that with the superintendent.
Well, I mean, it's a relationship between a school business official and the school committees. It's crucial. It's, you know, communication is, is very important, and still through the, ultimately pass a budget, but during that, that process, you know, through whatever sort of sign-up subcommittee you, you have here, you know, there inputs critical. I mean, in order for you to start and, you know, January or early February, whatever your timeframe, it's, it's likely not where you're gonna finish. You're, you're going to get some feedback along the way from the school committee finance committee. And you're gonna have to, you know, sometimes go back and rework things a little bit, you know. Maybe we can do this, you know, maybe we can reallocate this. Maybe the heating bill won't be as high as we think it is, you know, things like that. Sometimes you can move money around into other places. Or, you know, make small cuts here and there to, you know, get it down to a more, I guess, palatable number. And then, you know, from there, I'm thinking that, that, you know, the whole committee gets the budget presented to them. But by then, it'll be more refined. So, you know, developing relationships with the people that you're gonna work with to, to do that, to create that is, is very important. Can you repeat the second part of your question?
Sure. Yeah, the relationship developed with the school committee and how it differs to that with the superintendent.
Well, your, I mean, your school committee's gonna, you know, have the budget, and, you know, the superintendent's going to develop a budget that, you know, that they believe meets the needs of, of all learners and, you know, their operation or everything like that. You know, sometimes there, there can be conflict there. Sometimes the, the ask may seem too high. And, you know, sometimes you end up as the, you know, the middleman, for lack of a better term. I mean, what I've kind of done in the. I mean, what I've kind of done in the past and that is, I mean, you know, as I go through my own process. I develop templates for building principles and, you know, directors to fill out. I mean, you're gonna get everything, but we gotta start somewhere, right? And then I do all the district wide stuff, I mean, fix costs, transportation, uh, out of district specialized tuition, you know, I'll do that kind of stuff. Because I'll obviously engage what that's gonna be and. When I get all my stuff back from the principals and directors, I throw it into a master spreadsheet and, you know, look at the bottom line, I'm like, oh no. Uh, so, you know, what are you getting up into? Well, what I'll generally do is I'll bring that to the superintendent and say, okay, here's where we are now and based on whatever guidance we've gotten from our mayor. Um, because by that point, there would have been a budget letter that would have come out, which, you know, that's not going to happen in a a regional setup like like this. Um, you you know, but. After we have that conversation, we start to just kind of bounce things off one another and see what we can do. So I mean, that relationship is obviously crucial as well, um. By the time we get it to the first school committee finance committee, it's. It's lower, it's it's a little better. There may be an unhappy principal or director. Uh, or two, or maybe even another happy business manager, but, um, you know, we've we've gotten to the point where we have something we can present. And then take feedback. Now here, it's gonna look a little bit different because you're starting with your chapter seventy funding and, you know, your minimum local. Contribution that each of the communities have to make, so you know, you say, okay. Here's those two numbers. What's it going to cost in addition to that to, you know, fund everything we think we need? Um, and then whatever revenue sources that we have that can take, you know. Take the burden off, you know, what can be used from school choice, what can be used? Transportation reimbursement, can be used from the access of divisions, things like that, and then you get it down as. All as we can where, you know, you can assess the communities. Um, in a way that's, you know, hopefully workable for everyone.
Super.
And he's already answered yours, so that's.
Yeah, I know.
Describe an administrative decision that you've made in the past that you would do differently today.
I'm thinking back from principal days for that one. You know, you know, on the decisions nowadays, they're, I guess they are in. You know, classic definition of the word, they're more applied to, you know. Wow. Yeah, well, it's it's like, it seems it's only been four years, but it's like so long, you know, um. I I guess I'm gonna go back to, it wasn't too long before I last being a principal. Um, the elementary schools within the district were, um, they were gonna go with a redistricting process. Uh, the building I was in had about a hundred fifty more students than the smallest building in the district and. Um, some of the students lived closer to the other building. It was something that we wanted to tackle since before COVID, but it got derailed by a couple of years. For obvious reasons. Um, but, you know, the plan was to go forward with it the year after reopening here, so. Um, I had four sections of each grade level. And it was only gonna be three the year after, even though I wasn't gonna be there and at the time I knew that I'd already been hired in Northampton. Um, you know, there had to be some consolidation somewhere and some of it was gonna be attrition. There was gonna be a couple of people moving to other buildings. Because people are retired or whatever, you know. I did have a grade level where. I needed someone to move to a different grade level and nobody, I mean, I first I put it out to volunteers. You know, because I I had another grade level that there was a volunteer that wanted to, but this particular one, I had anybody that was interested. You know, I really had to like kind of take a look at each of the the teachers and. Figure out, you know, who was gonna be best to move. Um, and, you know, there was a couple and one of them was a licensure issue, they couldn't move anybody, so they were off the, you know. They were off the table to begin, but the other three were, you know, potentials and. I feel like I would have done that, I mean, ultimately, I, you know, I just, you know, said you're you're gonna be the one that moves and, you know. The news was not handled very well, um. I think if I could have gone back and and done that again. I I think I might have talked to everybody individually about how they would feel about it beforehand. Um, you know, even rather than asking for volunteers, um. You know, I think I probably would have just had a sit down with all four of them, all three of them, um, that could have moved in, you know. Just really had a conversation, you know, I could think maybe if I'd done that, that we, you know. It it might, I mean, in the end, the individual probably wouldn't want to move, but. It it might have been better, you know. Just sometimes you have to, you know, you have to sell something that's not gonna taste very well, uh, you know, in these worlds and, you know, I I. I would, I would have probably done that differently and and it's not a reflection of the fact that I knew I was gonna leave and I still care deeply about the building. And I, you know, I beat myself up over that decision for quite some time. Um, but, you know, you, you know, it's important to be self reflective in this field and, you know, look back on things because that's how you learn, so you. You know, the better in the future.
Super.
Thank you.
Yeah, my second one was is was uh, explaining your process and developing a budget. You pretty much went through most of that with one of these prior or a couple of these prior questions. So we're gonna move right on to number nine, so Eric, you get the last one for us.
I do. Um, describe your experience with end of year reports procurement, um, excess and deficiency, et cetera.
All right, well, the end of the year, Desi financial report, I've ended it on time every year and there, um. This year no different, uh, you know, sometimes it's a waiting game to get information from your city, but that's not an issue here because you hold the information. Uh, that I would normally get, there is no indirect cost agreement, uh, I don't believe in interregional folks, districts, um. There are a couple of sections of the report that need to be done that I've never done. I know you have to list the assessments in one place. Um, but Desi does a webinar every summer and and it's like a three part series. Third part is only for regional people, so, you know, I'm not terribly worried about that. I know that report in and out. Uh, otherwise, and honestly. If my door was closed for that, I could get it done much faster and, but that's not reality, it's obviously daily disruptions. Um, procurement, I I do um, have the M C P P O designation, um. I wouldn't say my procurement experience was terribly deep, I I mean. Uh, you know, we we have a city procurement official on East Hampton. Um, I do bounce a lot off him prior, uh, yeah, just that sometimes it's good to get other side eyes on things. Uh, you know, make sure you're doing everything properly, um. Uh, when I was in Northampton, we did bid out tutoring that we um, we paid for with COVID funding. Um, that that was an I F B process, I mean, hear that, um, so, you know, I've done that before, um. I've never had to go out with uh, for blessing. Uh, it was done right before I got to East Hampton, um, although you have L P V, you see. I'm assuming because you're a member of the collaborative, you don't go out that bit every five years, do you? Yeah, I wouldn't think you go like, um. Well, we have a food service vendor, I've not gone out the bit for that yet either because we did not find it before I got there. Um, you have your own department. So it's not an issue there, um. I just went out for a dishwasher at our high school. Um, we, you know, we're looking for ways to spend our cafeteria revolving funds because there's so much in there. You know, with, you know, new buildings, it was sometimes hard to come up with stuff, but, you know, our dishwasher wasn't great, so, you know, we're gonna switch to a conveyor. And on and whatever, um, that because of the wonderful state contract, I only get quotes. Um, so, you know, I got the Desi approval on that, that's gonna be good to go, um, you know, very shortly, so, you know, I'm, I. I know about procurement, um, I really wasn't part of the building project process in East Hampton. I came out the tail end of it. I mean, I did attend O A C meetings and, you know, final walkthroughs, the A D A compliance piece, like a dumb. The building section is still not commissioned yet, there's still a couple of things. Um, but from a procurement side, I didn't handle any of that. Other than just odds and ends that needed to be purchased after the fact that really weren't part of a building project funds, because eventually the faucet was gonna be shot. Um, so, um, you know, that's my experience of that, uh, excess and deficiency zero. I have not done that, I mean, I, you know, I have like a conceptual understanding, essentially it's it's. Money at the end of the year, if you have any, it it closes, it's sort of like a general fund, if you will. Um, I know you have to submit a, you know, pretty detailed report to the Department of Revenue every year. Um, that is probably relatively, it's a learning curve, I'm sure. Um, has that been done here yet for this year? I I don't even, I think October, November is the.
Over thirty.
Okay. So I'm assuming it's not done yet. There you go. I know the uh, the Abrahams group holds um, training. Uh, every year they they do quite a bit of, um, you know, the end of the year report training, student activity account training, Mark Abrahams is, you know, just a. Guru of these types of things, and that might be a valuable experience. Um, you know, just get a gauge on, although they're not calculations, you wanna, that's all.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
So those are the end of our questions, Nick. Do you have, is there anything? Any questions? Russ, you've got anything that we didn't ask you that you wanted to, to relate to us?
I don't think so. I'm gonna ask, you know, most of my questions are the first round, I mean, you say, I think I've come up with any sense.
So so the beauty of this, just to sort of describe you what happens next, this will be a relatively quick process. Um, this is a public forum right now, the next step in this is that we will open up the floor for discussion. Um, we'll do that for however long we need to and then we will immediately go to a vote to. Um, identify whether we would like to put forward an offer of employment for you for the position. Um, if that gets done in the affirmative, we'll be actually going right into executive right after this. Uh, where we will identify someone that will be, if if it's moved forward. Identify somebody that would negotiate the contract with you in the hopes that in our next meeting in two weeks. That we would be able to have that approved in executive and then publicly approved at our next school committee meeting, like I said, in two weeks. Um, the next step, uh, at this point for you, you're welcome to stay, it's a public forum, um, if you would like to. Go wait for a couple minutes, uh, you can do that too, I mean, that's completely up to you.
Yeah, I mean, my my last interviews for this at the school committee were on Zoom. All right, kidding, waiting out there is probably.
I think it's a public meeting, so I think you're certainly welcome to stay.
Thanks.
We we just miss each other. I think I came less than he came, okay.
Oh, there he is. Is Betsy still here?
No.
Okay. All right, yes, I'll have him. All right, don't worry. No, 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 no. All right. You absolutely did.
Currently, he's working in at East Hampton, but it's just not on his way. So we did first just, you know, it's a different order, it was like added later.
School explain is weird, it's, he went, he went from a principal to, and hang on, let's do this. Um, can I get a motion to enter into discussion on on, Nick?
Second.
Uh, all of them. Aaron, let the record show the one who passed six zero zero. Okay, so, discussion. He went to, he was a principal at Agwam, teacher for, then a principal in Agwam. Then he went to a business office manager in Northampton for a year, then went to East Hampton for the last two and a half years.
Yeah.
Um, and now he's looking to come on board here.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I'm curious, because on the front page, it says available to start July first, twenty twenty two, and then obviously that is his first. Um, yeah, that's a significant experience, and I was curious.
Yes. So.
Wonderful.
I guess also, I, yeah, I, that's my feeling too.
I mean, he had unemployment and he was like full farmless, you know, rural aid, all of these things, I'm like, he did his research.
Yes, yeah, and he was certainly as prepared when we first met with him a couple of weeks ago. Um, that identified that we wanted to come in front of the entire board, um. He certainly answered the questions. To my level of, except, I mean, he seems very prepared, he seems very methodical, he's very organized. Um, certainly something that, somebody that in that role needs to have those qualities, um. I like his, um, acceptance of what he doesn't know as much as what he does. Um, I don't think he's looking to enter into this knowing that he's just gonna like wing it. Um, there's certainly the question that Russ, that Russ asked, I think was very appropriate. Um, and I like, I liked his answers on on all the questions, I think he'd be a wonderful addition to the team.
And I think he could work great in general, which is a very big, you know, sticking point for this district, so.
Yeah. Mr. Fox, you look like you've got something.
No, I was just gonna say that the the first interview. Every single person thought he was the best kid.
Really?
Handstand, yeah, hands down. We had two parents.
Yeah.
We had.
Russell, myself, Aaron was there. Um, who else was there? Betsy was there, um, and then, uh, oh gosh. Somebody from the business office was there, no, not the business office.
From the school business office?
No, 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 who was here? That process right here, Joe's old office.
Oh, Jess?
No, not Jess, Jones's.
Sorry, oh.
Lisa, Lisa was there. Yeah.
By the way, it's Bernier, you do pronounce the R at the end. Bernier, Bernier.
What? He's French, I am French, so. I'm gonna pronounce.
He pronounces it with the R.
That's funny, I'll give up. We hire a, a call and burger. Or burger, burger.
I think, uh, uh, one of the most important things is his background identification, yeah, I mean, he understands.
Yeah, so what's amazing there is, I mean, my. My years, I think, go back to his beginning, so, you know, his teaching, he and I taught together very closely, we were teammates. Um, for ten years, so I know him best as a teacher, one of the best teachers I've ever known. Um, that we were part of the powerhouse team in in the school. Um, but what was amazing is, you know, I, although I've been in contact over the years. Um, I I really haven't been privy to his um, professional experience as a business officer. Um, you know, he was a phenomenal principal when he was in Agwam, phenomenal. Um, but hearing him speak today was like, wow. You know, every, he was brilliant as a history teacher, he was brilliant as a principal, but those are very different roles. Um, and so like not only is he taking his experience in education and in, you know, managing education. But like what he has learned in the role of, you know, business manager is just been incredible. His personality still shines through, um, we always called him Eeyore. That is his personality, um. He has the biggest heart you will ever know. Uh, he's a brilliant man, he has the biggest heart that you will ever. And he's funny. But I, you know, I, like, I just can't tell you how thrilled I am to see him. Um, and he has a hundred percent of my.
One thing that he mentioned at the first interview that he didn't mention today, and I think it was more or less the question, but he did make a comment and he did mention it today. Where he's talking about, well, I know where all my, all my personnel are, where the teachers are, where they are, I know what the costs are, I know. He made a point to expand on that at our first interview where he actually, wherever he was at, he went up to go see the teachers.
Yeah.
Like up at the school, make sure they knew that he just, just to make sure that he was able to introduce himself to them, which I thought was. Very personal.
And it should be an expectation that we put upon him or anybody in this position, that they do the same with our towns.
Yeah.
Um, very, very important in, certainly in the town of Randall. Um, for him to simply go meet the um, the select ward and the infant home there. And I would say the same is true in the other two towns.
Yeah.
Um, so that same kind of way that he had looking at those things, um, should should be extended.
And I don't think he would have any of these at all doing that. I mean, it's just, it just seems to be his personality, he, he comes across very transparent. But yet very confident in what he does, which I found was, you know, he he will probably approach.
The selectmen. And take a lot in, in other words, you can already see the. Give and take.
Yeah.
And I was impressed with just how well. He he'll fit into all three.
Yeah, no, I think he will too.
He will, I do.
Yeah, I mean, I think he'll find that, I don't, I don't think he's really. Yeah, I mean, I think he'll find that, I don't, I don't think he's realizing it, but I think he's gonna find that he's got, he has a lot more latitude in the role in a regional school district than he does in a municipal school district. There's lots, he's got a lot more funding sources, as he said, a lot more funding sources in order to make this pie work. Where when you're on the municipal side, there's only so many ways you can bring that money in. There's only so many ways you can allocate it. Here, you've got plethora of options in order to try to solve a problem. So, yeah, I mean, you say, I mean, we've got a lot.
The fact that he spent twenty, you know, twenty-two years in education too, means that, that's like, he writes. Like, this is where his financial wheelhouse is, which is amazing. It's like we have Joe back, in a sense.
Well, the nice thing is, is that the other piece that didn't come up tonight, but we did ask him at the first interview, was where is he see, actually, Mr. Fox asked that as his impromptu made up question, because we had two questions that were duplicate. Where do you see yourself in five years? Where do you see yourself in ten years?
Good, yes.
So, in five years, he said, well, I see myself as the business office manager. Uh, in ten years, I see myself as the business office manager. And then fifteen years, retired, I think it was, was what.
Sixteen.
Yeah, he said, but he, he does not have, right now, he may change his mind, but he did not imply that he had any real aspirations to go for the big seat, that he was going to be extremely content and happy doing the rest of his career in a business office manager role. Is that a fair way to assess that?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, and, and the interesting thing is what we, he was actually asking about turnover in, in the seat and what we, while we were there, I mean, literally before Steve. Steve was there, Pettit was there, and that's all we had. So, we've unfortunately gone through two business office managers in the last two and a half years, and when we had two for the last forty or thirty.
He will bring the stability to everyone.
Yeah, I think John said it before that.
Oh, before we reached him. Oh, okay, well.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like, that's, that, I think, we, we certainly, and I know, and I know this question has come up at least a couple of times over the last three, four days about turnover in, in district office and everything. Um, there are going to be times, and I look at this from, from an outside perspective, looking in the business world rather than the school world. Sometimes there are periods where you have transitory movement. What you have to hope is that you don't have it all at the same time. We haven't. We've had a number of people move and, and from, from my perspective, in almost all the positions, we have traded up. So, we've got much more to stay with people, better office, set up the morale and the interaction. It is visibly improved in that office. Um, and I think honestly, Nick, we have a very solid piece to that, um, so that we get back to on track.
And he's a straight shooter as well. He will tell you like it is. Um, he is not gonna tell you what you want to hear. And I think that that is crucial as well.
All right.
I feel confident.
Right.
Yeah.
How do you feel? No, I mean, I want, I mean, well, no, I wanna make sure.
No, I like to.
Okay. I don't want you to feel like.
Oh, no, I'm just listening.
Okay. All right, so do, do we have any other discussion? All right, can I get a, uh, see, Pam, do a motion to, to bring anyone aboard?
No, I don't.
Can I, can I get a motion to, to appoint Nick to our new, uh, business office manager role?
So.
Okay, I got two seconds. We got four. All right, can I get a show of hands to accept it? All right, Erin, let the record show the motion test six, zero, zero. All right. So, do we wanna bring back in? Give them the good news?
Absolutely.
All right. Hey, you wanna come in? Come on back in.